The North Las Vegas City Council welcomes you to its city council meeting. There are two public forums set aside for public comment, one at the beginning of the meeting and one at the end. If you wish to speak, please complete one of the blue cards which are located on the table outside the main entrance and at the podium rail. Please give the card to the city clerk. When I call upon you to speak, I request that you limit your comments to no more than three minutes and that you avoid repetition. Madam City Clerk, are we in compliance with the Nevada Open Meeting Law?
Yes, Councilwoman, we are.
Tonight, we have the opportunity to have the invocation given by Reverend Gordon Bailey from the Unitarian Universalist Congregation of Las Vegas. Following that will be the Pledge of Allegiance as led by Councilman Scott Black. Please rise.
What an honor it is to be with you this day, hear these words of prayer specifically earmarked for this community. Gracious Spirit of life and love, of justice and peace, we come before you this afternoon seeking your blessings, hoping for your guidance, praying and leaning on your grace, for each of us has reason to seek grace. Please bless this awesome city of ours, the city of North Las Vegas in this fabulous community of Clark County and the fabulous, most wonderful state of Nevada. Help us, each of us, do the very best we can do. Guide the leadership of this council and of this city in its discernment of how to best serve one of the most diverse and interesting cities in America. Be with this community as we continue to grow. This is a growing community and we need your support, oh gracious God. Know that we are willing and able servants, both the elected peoples and the laity of this community, to get their hands dirty and make this a better place. Ladies and gentlemen, may the God that you each know of and call on be with you, keep you healthy, keep you strong, keep you directed and going in the righteous path so that you may be the very best you can be. For these and so many other prayers that reside in your hearts and minds, let the community join me as we say, amen.
Please remain standing and join me as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Reverend, thank you for blessing us. Do you want to just give us a little bit about your church and your congregation?
I just want to let you all know that my congregation is celebrating its 70th anniversary in this community. We've been on East Lake Mead Boulevard, 3116 for a long number of years now. People think of it as Elks House or a place where things used to go on, but we're there now providing food and love, kindness and mercy to the community that we serve here. And it's an interfaith. Some of my members are Jewish, some are Christians, some are Muslim, some are Bahi, some are agnostic, and I've even got a few atheists, but we love them wherever they are on their spiritual journeys. So please know that if you're ever looking for a space where everybody is welcome, no matter your stripes, your ethnicity, your color, your creed, the Unitarian Universalist Congregation of Las Vegas is here for you.
And share your address, please.
3116 East Lake Mead Boulevard. Can't miss us, we're just down the block.
Thank you.
Come on and join us, please.
Thank you so much.
I bless you all.
All right, moving on to council items. And we have Councilman Churchill on the phone joining us this evening. So Councilman Barone, we'll start with you.
Yes, thank you. I hate saying madam, that sounds, you know, I was gonna say madam Pro Tem there. Okay, thank you very much. To begin with, I just heard last Saturday, we had a fantastic event. We had an homenage, an homage, to the poet Ruben Dario, who is actually kind of like a very storied figure in Latin American literature and actually, for the Nicaraguans, he's actually seen as a national hero. So I wanted to give a big thank you to the club Social Nicaragüense Las Vegas for holding this special event, celebrating the 155th birthday of poet Ruben Dario here in the city of North Vegas, our city hall, last Saturday. It's a big honor and there was music, there was dancing, there was singing, big cultural thing and of course, anything that brings culture makes us that much more human. Also, here next month, we're gonna have a visit by mayors from the state of Yucatan, Mexico. I don't know if our audience knows, but the city of North Vegas has been cultivating friendships and unofficial, I guess, unofficial relationships with cities throughout Central America. We hosted some mayors from Guatemala a few years ago and with various cities in Mexico, our southern border there. As the mayor likes to say, "We're about building bridges with our neighbors not making fences." And so I'll ask you to join us for that one if you can. Maurel Fashion Designs Anniversary, they had a fantastic event that I was able to show up to, the first one, I think, since they shut down here at the Silver Nugget, June 5th. I want to thank the volunteers who helped me out to do a carne asada cookout for our community improvement team. That was, of course, our graffiti guys, the community cleanup guys, the roadway guys, and women, I should say, and women. And it was just a nice way to say thank you for these daily heroes that may not always be recognized, you know, for keeping our community clean and safe in that way. And with that, I'd like to give a shout out to our code enforcement, graffiti, roadway cleanup teams, and all the other guys who do all those jobs for the city that aren't as, you know, well-recognized and maybe appreciated, but we're recognizing them and we're definitely appreciating it. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Black?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. I just wanted to piggyback, you mentioned graffiti. On a regular, pretty regular interval on my bike rides on the trail systems, I'll use the app, stop for 30 seconds, use the app to report graffiti and without fail, it is cleaned up and removed within the day, sometimes within the hour. And so I just want to say how amazing that is. That's a great commitment that we have to keeping our community looking nice and clean, so.
Tell them where they can get it.
Contact City of North Las Vegas app on your app store or Google, the Google store, and literally, you can report something in a matter of seconds. It's pretty awesome. So on June 4th, there were two really awesome events held in Ward 3, started in the morning with a pancake breakfast and open house at Fire Station 56. The people just kept coming and coming and coming. We had our explorers, we had firefighters out there. Thank you Chief Calhoun for supporting us in that effort. It was just really cool to see families and individuals from the community out looking at the firehouse and getting to know one another and enjoying a nice morning. And then the day ended at an awesome event at Silver Mesa Rec Center. The pool aquatic center there has gone through a much-needed renovation after 20-plus years of service and has a, it's fresh and clean and new and we had about 600 people out there for the grand reopening to break it in. So thanks to our staff for supporting both of those events and look forward to more awesome events like the one on August 6th. School just barely got out and I'm talking about back to school, so sorry kids, but something to cheer you up when school does go back in, we're having an event on August 6th at Silver Mesa Rec Center. I do this each year with Commissioner Marilyn Kirkpatrick. We have backpacks and bicycles giveaway, great event for the families, free food and swimming, so put that on your calendar. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilman. So tomorrow is an awesome day in the city of North Las Vegas and we are having our Juneteenth flag raising ceremony here at City Hall at 9:00 AM tomorrow, just to start the celebration of the actual Juneteenth recognition, which is actually on June 19th, and that's why it's called Juneteenth, because the first one was actually on the actual June 19th, which was Father's Day. And it just commemorates and recognizes that slaves were free in Galveston, Texas, but they didn't get the word until 18, two years after it was announced, so they got word in 1865 and so that they were a free people. And so we are just making that a very, very well-known holiday throughout the United States. Not many people know about Juneteenth. If you're from Texas, you just, you had to know about it because that's what you do in Texas. So we are going to help celebrate that tomorrow. And then following the Juneteenth flag raising ceremony here at the Martin Luther King Junior Senior Center, there is a luncheon, and I don't know if I'm supposed to invite everybody because I don't know who's all invited, but I'm inviting everybody. So if you've never had Ms. Archie's cooking, you're missing out. So that's from 11 to 12:30, 1 o'clock tomorrow. And so on Friday, we did a segment with Channel 13 for the Morning Blend, so if you're able to watch Channel 13 Friday morning, please tune in to hear all the great things that are happening around the valley, not just in North Las Vegas. And then next week, elected officials have been invited to tour and participate at the Salvation Army. It's called Salvation Army Elected Official Day at the Owens location, so we just kind of get firsthand experience as to the services that they offer and the population that they serve. So I hope my colleagues will be able to join me for that, because I'm really excited to tour that place again. And then on Saturday, June 25th, if you've driven on Martin Luther King heading north or south in either direction from Cary to Cheyenne, and you see the Walker Pool, it's been painted, it's just beautiful, the murals that are on the walls at the pool. And so I'm hosting my summer pool party on June 25th and we'll have lots of food and games and water slides for the kids and all ages, so please come out and join me on June 25th. And with that being said, we're going to move on to council items. I'm sorry, moving on to the first public forum. So we're at the city council's first public forum. This is a time set aside to comment on posted agenda items. Items listed under the public hearing section of the agenda will have their own public hearings when they are heard. So if you want to speak on any items on today's agenda other than the public hearing items, now is the time. Madam City Clerk, do we have any blue cards for posted agenda items? No. Thank you. So with that, I will close the public forum.
Moving on to the agenda, item one, city council regular meeting agenda for June 15th, 2022. Mayor and council items number eight through 13 on the consent agenda are recommended for withdrawal.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, and I'll call for a motion on the approved agenda as amended.
Move for approval of the agenda as amended.
Mayor Pro Tem Churchill?
Hi.
Thank you.
Did you hear me?
Barely.
Yeah, so what happened, when I was going to push the button that said make motion, it switched to no. I mean, I voted no, but I meant to vote yes, but I also meant to make a motion before I voted yes.
We will make that correction.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Motion passes. Moving on to the consent agenda.
Consent agenda consists of items two through 27, with items number eight through 13 removed from the agenda per council's previous action to approve the agenda as amended. It's our recommendation to approve the consent agenda as amended.
I'll call for a motion.
Move to approve as amended.
Thank you. Motion passes. Moving on to business.
Kind of got excited when Councilman Black was not approving the agenda, I thought we were done. Yeah, we're done. Item number 28 is set future public hearing dates. If it's, this item consists of four dates, if it's your direction, that we'll set these future public hearing dates.
So noted.
Item number 29, speaking points by Clark County School District Regional One Associate Superintendent Aliana Kreiner Wilson and Chief Strategy Officer Kylie Ballard.
Welcome to our city council meeting.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Kelly Kowal-Paul. I am, it's a name change, your documents are not incorrect. I'm the Chief Strategy Officer for the Clark County School District. With me is Elena Kreiner, who is, Kreiner Wilson, excuse me, who is a school associate superintendent for Region 1 in the Clark County School District. I'm happy to be here today. This building is beautiful and lovely and so I'm a little bit jealous of your facilities here. Very lovely, but I'd like to give you an update on two topics. Number one, the reorganization under NRS 3DHG, which is the law that requires our presence here today and quarterly. And then number two, some information that has been posted today that will be presented to our Board of School Trustees on June 23rd, that I believe you all will find very interesting. First, on the reorganization, I just want to give you an update. We've been working with the State Department of Education on some final pieces of compliance of that law. The final two that are kind of in conversation most often are the requirement that we allocate 85% of unrestricted funds to schools. Second, the authority for principals to hire the staff for their school. There are some complications to compliance with those two pieces that we've been discussing with the state and with the state board. The state board has been considering some regulations that are to do with training requirements for the reorganization, clarification on terms that relate to the principals hiring the staff for their school, also some changes to their existing dispute resolution regulation that's in NAC, and potential consequences for non-compliance. It's important to point out that the board has publicly stated, asserted that some of the pieces that are included in those draft regulations are, we believe, outside of the authority of the State Board of Education, and so those are not yet adopted and I'm sure conversations will be continuing. Upon request of the State Board of Education, we will be presenting during their July 7th meeting, information related to the allocation of funds to schools and related to the carry forward of funds in school budgets from year to year at their request. The second item is related to a teacher vacancy update being presented to our Clark County School District Board of Trustees on June 23rd. The agenda posted this afternoon, which is what allows me to speak to you about the materials today. The presentation will seek to answer the question, what the current state is of teaching positions and teaching vacancies in the Clark County School District. And what we found through analysis of data is that the significant increase in the number of planned licensed positions over the last seven years is outpacing the number of teachers the district can hire. So principals are trying to decrease class sizes and increase instructional, non-classroom instructional support positions, but the district has been unable to fulfill the vacant classroom positions that are left behind. At the same time, student enrollment has been declining in the Clark County School District. What we found in terms of an impact to schools, individual schools in the Clark County School District, is that as of June 1st, 26 schools had over 20% of licensed positions that were vacant. Eight of those schools are North Las Vegas schools. And when we looked at a heat map, which is in the backup information you can see posted for the 23rd meeting, you can see very clearly that those teacher vacancies are focused heavily in North Las Vegas. Around 8% of the planned positions district-wide are vacant in North Las Vegas, that number is closer to 13%. So we anticipate some conversation between our board and the experts who did that analysis about what that means. The board will also hear about next steps from our chief, our brand-new chief, Human Resources Officer, as we try to work toward opening schools with as few vacancies as possible for the oncoming school year. If you have any questions for either one of us, we'd be happy to answer them at this time.
Thank you for your presentation. I'll start with Councilman Barone.
Yeah, thank you very much for coming. It's always a pleasure to host you. Quick question, are you, maybe, my head is a little bit congested, but did I hear this right, that enrollment, student enrollment in school district is down?
It has, yes, sir. Kelly Kowal-Paul, I almost forgot my name, Kowal-Paul for the record. It has been declining for several years, absolutely. We saw an increase in the number of licensed positions up until last year, where licensed positions are kind of, licensed employees, excuse me, are kind of down below the 16, 17 school year, but licensed positions continue to raise as, like I said, principals are trying to lower class sizes and increase instructional support.
Okay, I just, you know, since the last time we had a count here in the city of North Las Vegas, I know we've gone up from 240,000 people to 270,000 people, so I don't know if we're the only ones growing, but I have a feeling that we're not the only, I just, I don't know where these figures come from, because I know over at Rantle High School, I know we're pretty much to the seams, you know, we're still way over what the school was ever built for, which is, you know, a school of our flight, if I remember correctly, is built at 2,500 and we've been at 3,000 or over that for the last several years, so I'm not sure how that comes about. And I'd be really interested to see where those numbers are being reconciled. I just have those questions. I do, I did have, I keep a period of contact with the principals from K through high school in North Las Vegas, especially in Ward 1. One word that does keep on coming up because of various things that have happened across the nation, and a few things here in our own school district, security, mostly cameras, security cameras. A lot of the schools are still using the same security cameras that were installed 15, 20 years ago, and it seems like the individual budgets that each school have may or may not cover, you know, an upgrade to these cameras. These cameras are, the technology is a couple decades old sometimes, and just with so much that's happening and so many concerns, I'm kind of hoping that there'll be a conversation somewhere to improve in school security, that the subject of cameras comes out and that the individual building principals are not left to fend for themselves in getting cameras, quite frankly. It's just something that you need for the internal security of the school, as well as being able to identify people maybe on the outskirts who have been preying on our schools, you know? So just that's a little conversation that I've had. Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you, sir.
Just a couple questions or clarification. We recently created an education advocacy committee and each of us had roundtable sessions with principals in our North Las Vegas schools, and the overarching theme that came out of these meetings were staffing issues, absentee rates, and then family engagement. And so staffing issues is a very high concern with schools here, as you mentioned, the percentage that you shared with us and the number of schools with high vacancies, so that's just absolutely something that we want to pay strong attention to, to see what happens with that. And another question that was raised by a few of the principals, and just clarify, you said something about 85% of the unrestricted funds, and then you said carryover funds, so do the site principals, do they have a say-so and where those funds go, can they retain those funds, or how does that work? I didn't understand that.
Sure, great question. Kelly Kowal-Paul for the record, again, the requirement in the law is that we allocate 85% of unrestricted funds to schools, unrestricted, well, conversely, or inversely, whatever. A restricted fund is anything that the district is required by law or by the Department of Education to carry out. Everything else would be unrestricted. Now, we've not met that 85% yet because, well, partly because of interpretation, partly because some of the things that are included in that unrestricted category are things that schools can't take care of, legal, transportation, things like that. So those are the kind of conversations that are still happening with the state board. We'll have them on July 7th when we go there, it'll be included in the presentation for sure. The carryforward, schools are also required under that same law to retain any unspent funds in their school budget to the following year. They have the authority to do with those funds what they like. I'm just in the middle of an analysis of those plans for next year and some of the budgets from, the spends from last year. Without a doubt, the highest challenge for principals in spending those funds, and the carryover funds have increased a lot. It started at 23 million five years ago, it's now at 181 million, which is like, you know, it can take you back, but without a doubt, it's principals having a hard time finding people to hire. Second to that is some delays in purchase of technology. Obviously, there's supply chain issues everywhere, school district is not exempt from the effects of those issues. And then the third one I'm kind of seeing up anecdotally is schools planning on making major purchases and saving for multiple years, then the district had an influx of federal dollars and we ended up purchasing what they were saving for. So those are some of the things that are contributing to the growth of those dollars. It's a conversation we'll continue to have with the state board at their request and of course, with principals as we move forward.
Do we need a motion for this item, or did you have any comments?
I had a couple of comments, but no, it's just a presentation. So you'd mentioned that it's, one of the problems that the principals are having is hiring. Is that something that's shared the same across the district, or you'd mentioned the teacher shortage in North Las Vegas compared to other parts of the valley?
Yeah, Kelly Kowal-Paul for the record, the sentiment is shared across the district, the severity is not. If you look at the materials that we have prepared for the CCSD Board's 23rd of June meeting, you'll see the heat map there. That shows very clearly a greater impact in North Las Vegas, it's not the only impact. But, and also, we know anecdotally, although it's not included in this analysis, that that has been the story for many, many years. I think it is exacerbated now though, because like we said, schools have so much more money right now, they have a lot of carryforward, schools in different parts of the community that have historically found it easier to hire, hire more staff, which leaves more vacancies where it's harder to hire. So we're seeing those impacts kind of get worse.
And that's a concern that I have, counsel, is the fact that we have seen this in North Las Vegas, where we have a more difficult time retaining teachers, because we have newer teachers that come into the district, they tend to start in our urban core, and then as positions open up other places, they will migrate and move to those other positions. And what I'm hearing from the district right now is that principals have the power to determine class sizes, so principals maybe in some areas of town are able to have smaller class sizes, which is further impacting the flight of teachers. Is that, is that accurate? Is that where the problem is?
Yes, sir, that is accurate. It may not be the only cause of the problem, but it's certainly contributing.
So what, if anything, are you, and I know you've got to take this to your own board, but what are some of the plans on the school district to address the fact that North Las Vegas, our kids and our students are getting less teachers?
Sure. First of all, there are district-wide shortages, strategies that would impact district-wide shortages, like continuing to market our new raised beginning teacher salary, for example, but really what would focus in on the schools that have the highest percentages of vacancies would be the, like I said, brand new, she's been here for a week, new chief HR officer will be examining with the rest of the team some possible incentives for teachers to, and leader, school leaders probably, to be hired at and be retained at some of those schools. So we'll be looking at strategies like those going forward. We certainly don't want it to get any worse.
I'm just a city manager. I think in a previous conversation, I did point out that much earlier in my almost three-decade career, the school district did work with the unions and with purrs to offer an extra 20th of a year to high-needs schools like Rantle High School, and I accrued five of those years, and I'm just saying, that's one little minor thing, you know, a little bone that can be thrown out that is also highly valued. And now with the high cost of traveling with gas, I don't know, maybe a mileage, a mileage thing, I know I've lost several of my colleagues who they've decided that they want to teach closer to home. That's one thing that had been taught to us by this pandemic, family time does mean something, and I think we're gonna have to make it worth people's while to come here to North Las Vegas if they don't already live, if they don't already, well, they work here, but if they don't live here, that could be like a minor thing. The housing market, I think, might be cooling down just a little bit, so there's things that we could work with the realtors. There are federal programs, the Teacher Next Door Program. If indeed the brakes are being tapped on the housing market, housing's a big issue, and that is yet another avenue for, to recruit teachers to literally invest in our community. They could literally live right down the street from the school they work in, thus, you know, improving their quality of life and improving our big issue, and that is yet another avenue for, to recruit teachers to literally invest in our community. They could literally live right down the, the street from the, the school they work in. Thus, you know, improving their quality of life and improving our city at the same time. They're just, just three things that I can come up with off the top of my head.
Yeah, one of the concerns I have, and I appreciate those, councilman, is, you know, going into the pandemic, we all knew where we were as a school district. It just depended on which list you were looking at, but it wasn't, I mean, we, we had challenges. The district had challenges in where they were ranked in different places. And my concern is, is now, just as the city of North Las Vegas has received funds from the federal government through various programs, the school district, I don't remember how much, but is it close to a billion dollars or?
It is.
Yeah, so they got a billion dollars that was not in, they didn't know they were going to be getting, they just got it because Uncle Joe, you know, cut checks and checks came into them and came into us and came into everybody. And my concern is, is everybody got that across the country. Now, the question that we have to ask ourselves is, what are we doing with that? Because the other school districts that were ranked ahead of us, or the other school districts that were performing better than us, they also receive these dollars. And if they commit those dollars to becoming better and we don't have a plan of where to put those dollars and we're not addressing these challenges that we're seeing right here, that it looks like the, the school district is looking at, that Dr. Jar and his team are looking at, if we don't address those challenges, the other communities will invest those dollars wisely and they won't just be ahead of us on the list, but there will be a massive gap between them and us if we don't use the dollars to correct the challenges we had existed prior to the pandemic. So we have a unique opportunity. The city of North Las Vegas is facing the same, the same kind of questions. You have these dollars, you have a unique, unique opportunity to move the dial, but what are we doing? And we know this has been a problem that was on our radar first coming into the city in 2014, that we, we had challenges with the teachers, in particular in North Las Vegas, because they tended to come in and, and leave after time. We had some incredible ones, but a lot of them would leave and go to other schools. And how do we retain them? How do we commit to something that just doesn't last a few years but lasts longer so that we can keep these teachers and keep them here? I mean, I can remember several times running down the, down the hallway as a sixth grader where my first grade teacher would say, "What are you doing, Ryan?" You know, that, that kind of longevity within the school is important for our kids and to not have that, to have these very transitional schools and not, not have that built-in neighborhood and built-in community is, is problematic.
And whatever incentives have to be for the long haul, it's like it's a one-time fix that lasts two or three years and that's what's used to happen, that's not going to retain teachers, especially in North Las Vegas, but district-wide, period. So something for the long term, that's super, super attractive.
Agreed. And that is part of the challenge of applying the relief dollars to some of these systemic kind of problems that we have, is that those dollars are going to be gone before we know it. And we, and we won't be able to sustain anything for too much longer, so. But all of those are under consideration and very great, excellent recommendations.
And just wanted, just to invest wisely as well, because you don't, you said you have all this money, you've got to have something to show for it.
That's right.
Otherwise, that doesn't look good, period, in Clark County School District as a whole.
Yep.
Yep.
Keenly aware, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, any other comments or questions? All right, well, thank you, appreciate you all being here.
Thank you very much.
And this is not a voting item, so we can go on to item 30?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Item number 30, resolution number 2693, the resolution of the city of North, of the city council of the city of North Las Vegas, Nevada, augmenting the fiscal year 2021, '22 budget. There is a small, a, a presentation prior to opening a public forum.
Good afternoon, council members. I'm Gary McDonald, the budget manager in the finance department. I'm here to bring you today, resolution 2693, the year-end budget augmentation for fiscal year 21, '22. Slide 2 is just an item that you've seen before, it just gives the reasons behind an augmentation. And this resolution summarizes all of the changes to the budget that occurred between January 1st and June 8th of this year. The next slide is the NRS rules and the items that give rise to the kinds of items that create changes to the adopted budget. Slide 4 is a summary of the history of the budget augmentations that we've had. The last line item is the one that we're bringing you today and we're going to talk The next slide is a summary of the changes, went too far, summary of the changes and the augmentation that are taking place. This brings both the mid-year and the year-end together. And what you'll see is a net increase of $27.6 million, moving the adopted budget from 817.8 million to 845.3 million dollars. Next slide is a summary of the changes for the year-end. The highlights from this slide are lines four and five, which you'll see there's lots of grants that have come to us, 38 million in new grants, 6 million moved from last year to this year. Offset by the last two items are project, carryovers and capital projects. That happens every year, due mostly in this case due to timing. The last slide is we're required to show you all of the changes in detail by fund so that you can see what it is and understand what they are, and that, more importantly, you have to approve it by fund if there are changes between funds. With that information, this is the budget augmentation. We recommend approval and I'll entertain any questions that you have.
Before we open the public comment, I'll, council, do you have any questions or comments? Nope. Okay, so with that, I will go ahead and open the public forum. Madam City Clerk, do we have any blue cards for this agenda item?
No, ma'am, we do not.
Okay, thank you very much. And so with that, with that being said, I will call for a motion.
Move to approve resolution number 2693.
Aye.
Motion passes, sorry.
Item number 31, resolution number 2696, authorized and city manager is designated to give notice of the sale of property subject to an assessment lien that is delinquent and providing for other matters property related thereto.
There's no presentation for this one, correct?
No, ma'am, there's not.
Counsel, any questions, comments? Okay, if not, I'll call for a motion.
Mayor Protem, I'll be making the motion to approve resolution 2696.
Thanks, we have a motion. And that motion passes. Moving on to ordinance's final action.
Item number 32, ordinance number 3117, an ordinance related to zoning, reclassification, reclassifying approximately 6.7 acres of C1 neighboring commercial district to a PUD, PID planned unit develop, planned unit development, planned infill development district, ZN-05-2022, Craig and Allen Apartments, consisting of a 161-unit multifamily apartment complex and property located approximately 540 feet east of the southeast corner of Craig Road and Allen Lane and providing for other matters property related thereto.
Councilman Churchill, do you have any questions or comments? This is your ward.
Uh, no, I don't, but I'll be happy to go ahead and, what item are we on over here? Is this 31?
32.
I'm sorry, I looked over, your final action?
Yes, on 32.
Okay, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve item number 32, ordinance number
Motion passes.
Item number 33, ordinance number 3123, an ordinance amending Title V of Municipal Code of the City of North Las Vegas relating to business licenses generally by amending section 5.O2.001 definitions by deleting and replacing section 5.02.270 S license fees for short-term rentals and providing for other matters property related thereto.
Counsel, any questions or comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Move for approval.
Madam Chairman.
I'm sorry.
This is a public hearing, I, I'm not sure if you called for any cards or public response to this.
This is a public hearing item. So anyone wishing to speak on item 33?
Madam Councilwoman, out of, out of an abundance of caution, we're going to have item 33 be a public hearing.
Then do we need to go back to 32 as well or we are okay on 32?
No, ma'am, we're okay on 32.
Okay, so item 33, I'll open the public comment. Do we have any blue cards, Madam City Clerk?
No, ma'am.
Anyone wishing to comment? Okay, hearing or seeing none, I'll close the public comment and I will call for a motion.
Move for approval.
I vote aye on that.
Item 34?
I was just waiting, sorry, I was waiting for the screen to clear. Item number 34, ordinance number 3124, an ordinance amending Title V of the Municipal Code of the City of North Las Vegas Business License and Regulations by repealing and replacing chapter 5.29 Cannabis Establishments, amending section 5.42.010, persons required to undergo criminal background investigations for business license purposes and providing for other matters property related thereto.
Any questions or comments? Okay, I'll open the public forum for this item. Any blue cards, Madam City Clerk?
No, ma'am.
Thank you, hearing or seeing none, we will close the public forum for item 34 and I'll entertain a motion. Councilman Churchill?
I approve item number 34. I'm loo, my, my reception is going in and out, so I apologize.
Understood, motion passes.
Item number 35, ordinance number 3126, an ordinance relating to the zoning, reclassifying approximately 2.08 acres from RAR2 redevelopment area, medium density residential subdivision to an RADC redevelopment area downtown core sub-district, ZN-07-2022 for property located at 1941 Jefferson Street and providing for other matters property related thereto.
Councilman Barone, any questions or comments?
No, I just want, I just want to say, I'm really looking forward to the development that'll be going on it.
All right, this will open up for the public forum. Any blue cards?
We do have some blue cards.
Did we open it up, Mayor Protem, for a vote yet?
Not yet. Councilwoman, the blue cards delivered to you are for the second public forum, ma'am. Thank you. With no comments on item 35, I will close the public forum and call for a motion.
I make a motion to approve.
Motion passes.
Item number 36, ordinance number 3127, an ordinance amending Title 17 of Municipal Code of the City of North Las Vegas, ZOA-02-2022 relating to permitted uses to allow short-term rentals and providing for other matters property related thereto.
Counsel, any questions or comments? If not, I'll open the public forum on item 36. Any blue cards, Madam City Clerk?
No, ma'am.
Thank you, no other comments, I'll close the public forum and entertain a motion.
Move for approval.
I approve 36.
Motion passes.
Item number 37, ordinance number 3128, an ordinance amending Title 8 of the Municipal Code of the City of North Las Vegas relating to the issuance of civil penalties for short-term rental violations in addition of 90-day late fee by amending section 8-70, 8.70.020, fee schedule for civil citations and civil penalties and providing for other matters property related thereto.
Counsel, any questions or comments? Okay, I will open this one for the public forum. Madam City Clerk, do we have any blue cards?
No, ma'am.
Okay, with that, I'll close the public forum and entertain a motion for item 37.
Move for approval.
I support 37 for approval.
Motion passes. Moving on to ordinance's introduction only.
Item number 38, ordinance number 3116, an ordinance related to zoning, reclassifying approximately 86.18 acres from R1 single-family low-density district to an M1 business park industrial district, ZN-04-2022, Cary Simmons Industrial for prop, property located at the northeast corner of Cary Avenue and Simmons Street and providing for other matters property related thereto. Item number 39, ordinance number 3129, an ordinance relating to the zoning, reclassifying approximately 16.6 acres from an RE Ranch Estate District to a PUD planned unit development district, ZN-15-2020, Lone Mountain Allen, to allow a 38-lot single-family development for property located generally north of Lone Mountain Road between Willis Street and Kenny Way and providing other matters property related thereto.
Thank you. Moving on to the city manager's report. Mr. City Manager?
I, I have nothing to report at this time, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So we are moving on to the second public forum. Now is the time for the public to speak on issues that were not on the agenda tonight but that are within the jurisdiction or control of the city council. Speakers are limited to three minutes. Remember, no items raised during this second public forum may deliberate, be deliberated or acted upon by the city council. However, the items discussed may be referred to the city manager or other city staff for action by the city council at a later date. And I see we have two blue cards, Madam City Clerk, and this is Dan Cooper.
Hello, my name's Dan Cooper. I'm service-connected veteran and I'm a current volunteer for Cloud County Schools, trying to be a good dad. My daughter and I have been terrorized by a militia called the Oath Keepers as well as several motorcycle gangs. We have fled, since leaving our last duty station, we have fled our last two homes, which we were put in by nonprofit veteran organizations where the landlords had people using fake names, two of which turned out to be most-wanted FBI fugitives. These people have attacked me and my daughter over and over. We have been poisoned for seven years, from 2010 to 2000, 2010 to 2018. The harassment with this group has never stopped. They pull their campers from wherever they're at and they live in the area. I have tried to fight this on my own and I've gotten nowhere. My daughter is borderline handicapped from repetitive drugging and repetitive poisoning. We are embarrassed of this. I have fled two homes that veteran nonprofit agencies put us in because the landlords were having introduced us to people who are criminals using fake names. We've had no prosecutions. I am here humbly requesting, if you can't help us, get us to the proper people who can help us. I want prosecution. These people were not just breaking in our house, they were breaking in our house and tampering with our food as well. You can't fight that kind of thing. So... So if you could just point us in the right direction, and they take us seriously, so we could identify the people, I've reported over and over in tears, to get help for me and my daughter, it'd be great.
Thank you. We'll have you talk with Captain Hyde at the end of the meeting, so just stick around.
And I'm looking for a job.
Okay, thank you. I hope I'm not saying this wrong, Zayas? Yalanda?
That's correct.
Thank you.
My dark shades are actually, they're prescriptions. I see them signed on side. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I think my concern was...
Can you just state your name?
Yalanda Diaz.
Again, please, thank you.
My concern was the grants that's going allocated, 17.5 million, I believe, for nonprofits. And my concern is that, I'm a small business in North Las Vegas, I own a home in North Las Vegas, my family owns homes, my grandchildren go to school here in North Las Vegas, we're loving North Las Vegas. My concern is that small businesses were not allowed to apply for the grants. We're in a recession and possibly headed for a depression, and small businesses are the backbone of the communities, and if we're left out of those grants, what's going to happen to small businesses? How did this happen? How did 17.5 million go to nonprofits and nothing was allocated to small businesses? That is a question, so I don't know if you all answered questions. This is like my first time here, but it won't be my last.
Go ahead, City Manager.
Thank you, Councilwoman. It's sometimes for people, it's the first time in a meeting, that this is an awkward form, so council does not reply to this form, but after this meeting, we will definitely talk with this constituent. Thank you.
And that's another concern. I think that's too private. I think everyone should know what the answer is, but that's my opinion. One more thing, I think the budget, the young man did mention in the budget that there's $38 million in grants. How do you access those grants? Where are they? They're not on the North Las Vegas website. I visit that website on a regular basis, and I never see where there's grants available. And he mentioned it's $38 million in grants.
And just because this is the public forum section, we cannot deliberate with you, so we'll have to talk with you after the meeting. We'll definitely get some answers to those questions, though.
Okay, and one more thing, I know North Las Vegas is now, is running a business, and it looks pretty good. It's come a long way. My concern is that we're bringing in all this industrial, big businesses, you know, and so it's taking up the space, and I don't know how much space we have. I guess I need to look that up. But we're not bringing in anything for family. We need a museum. Over here, we need other activities, family activities. This is a, I don't know how many millions of people live in North Las Vegas, but there's almost nothing to do here but to shop and go home. And we need more than just that, bringing in the amount of tax dollars that we bring in. We would like to, in my opinion, it would be nice if we had some museums and some other things that would reflect history and different cultures and different, you know, history on different cultures, and history of North Las Vegas, history of Las Vegas, or whatever, just something that would be more than what we do have. And I think, I think, oh, the Small Business Connector, that's my last thing. It lacks diversity. It lacks diversity. I have a hard time connecting with the Small Business Connector. I think they're really busy. I don't know what their issues could be, but there's a lot of complaints in the community that people are trying to connect with the Small Business Connector, and there's no return phone calls, or emails are delayed, and you reach out to them, they don't reply back. And then there's just really no real connection there. Again, like I said, we live in a very diverse community, and we would like to see that our tax dollars at the Business Connectors is there for everyone, that we have a more diverse Business Connector Center. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, and we'll address all of those after the meeting. Any other questions or comments from the audience? If not, this meeting is adjourned.